How're doing?
Called over to the meeting of the Woodland Park City Council. Today is Thursday, March the 6th. This is our regular meeting. And we'll take a roll call. Cindy.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Bravetto. Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Eric Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Please just join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks everybody for coming and looking forward to a good meeting tonight. We're going to start with something that's an annual event and is always good to hear what all's going on down to Cripple Creek and Victor with the mine. And it has such an impact on our entire community and such good things. And we'd like to welcome Jane Mannan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Jane Mannan, manager of community affairs for Cripple Creek and Victor Gold Mining Company. And I also have with me Ray DuBois, our vice president and general manager.
Welcome, Ray.
And thank you all for your time. Just want to come and give you our annual update, let you know what we have going on. See if I can remember how to...oh, there we go. So, just to give a recap of 2013, we ended the year with 522 employees total. Two-hundred-and-ninety of those are in Teller County and 90 employees use a Woodland Park zip code. Our annual compensation, which is the total package for...in the Woodland Park area, is 8.9 million for last year. We have approximately, right now, about 275 contractors on site. We anticipate that during the summer, for our construction season this year, that will probably increase. So, you all will see some of that impact. And by the end of this year, the beginning of next year, we anticipate about 630 employees on the site, CCMB employees on the site. And so, when we talk about those numbers, people often ask us what kind of jobs and how do I get a job at the mine? Because it is really a great place to work. And we are hiring...we have a lot of folks in the mining division as well as in the process with our new mill. Have a lot of folks that we're hiring for the mill projects. We accept applications for open positions. And those are listed on our website. So, if folks are interested, the application's there as well as the open positions and what we're accepting applications for. Due to the volume of applications that we get, I do caution applicants that we don't necessarily...we don't have the time to respond. You know, all the things that the resume books tell you, that once you submit your resume, you need to call and you need to, you know, express your interest. And we just don't respond to those. The HR offices look a little like an episode of Hoarders with all the paperwork that they have. So, when somebody submits an application, we do respond to that. And then, we go through them and notify people from there. So, don't call us, we'll call you. 2013, about 200...a little over 230,000 ounces of gold produced. We anticipate about that same amount 2014. About 68 million tons of material moved. And we are still moving about two tons of waste material for every ton of ore that we move. So, we've got all those guys out there in the great big trucks working 24/7 getting material moved. In 2013, our taxes paid to Teller County is about 5.4 million. The state of Colorado is about 6.7 million. I do like to point out the severance tax dollars that we pay. And some of that money is going back into the Energy Mineral Impact Grants. And so, we like to encourage our local governments to avail themselves of that program. There is money back in that program. And certainly, if the city of Woodland Park goes for any energy mineral grants, certainly let us know because we like to show the industry support for those grants and bringing that money back into our local community, what it was intended for, to address the impacts of our operation. So, right now, we're in the middle of our mine life extension to progress. This was the approval that we got in 2011. We're right in the middle of construction, working on our new valley...extended Valley Leach facility. We've completed our highway relocation of Highway 67 in between Cripple Creek and Victor. Our new process plant, which is the ADR, that's adsorption-desorption recovery. We have a new plant coming in. We're working on building the platform for that right now and hope to start building that soon. Our mill is proceeding. They have the metal superstructure up on that. And we anticipate that we will be producing gold out of the new mill the end of this year, the beginning of next year. And then, our process solution enhancement, which is basically kind of a filtering system for our process solution, that will be in place and operating at the end of third quarter. So, in the work that we're doing to build that Valley Leach facility, one of the first things that our contractors have to do is come in and remediate all of these historic mine openings. This whole area has been mined extensively with underground mining methods. So, before we lay down the liner and we put the ore on top for treatment to get...to recover the gold, we have to remediate these openings. So, you can see in this picture, there's a historic opening up here. And then, we've got a cement pumper truck and they're pumping down here to close off one of the...some of the smaller openings. So, some are small and some are pretty big. This is another closure that we've done. And those are...that's equipment and folks standing there. So, you can see the scale of a lot of what they do. What they're doing is extending out to competent ground and then closing that off so that when we put the liner and the ore on top of that, that that is structural and it won't fail underneath the Valley Leach facility. From the north looking south, this is the old highway in Squaw Gulch and the new highway going across the bottom of Squaw Gulch. And then, this is the area where the Valley Leach facility will be, up above the old highway and in that area. And you can see they're working on that quite a bit, right in between, you know, Victor's over here and Cripple Creek's over this way. The highway realignment did open in September...the end of September, so traffic is going across there. One of our projects this fall was to hydro-seed those downslopes from that relocation of the highway as well as the new cut slopes. We found that a lot of that material, as we sprayed it down, blew back up on the highway. So, we coaxed it back down on the other side, back down the slope. And now, we put down what our environmentalists use the technical term of glue to keep that stuff on there. And so, hopefully, we've got some snow on there and we'll get some oyster, we'll get some seeds growing. And probably, a lot of stuff growing on the side of the highway as well as a result. The historic Mary McKenney crib wall was there in Squaw Gulch. We did have to remove that for the construction. This is the slope...one of the slopes where the Valley Leach facility will be installed. So, our contractors were able to come in, take that old waste rock material from the historic Mary McKenney Mine, pull that out from behind the crib wall, and then, they secured it with these metal bars, cut this out in panels and reinstalled those panels on our new highway cut. So, we've got...it's not the same, but a representation of that historic Mary McKenney crib wall there. They've just completed...in fact, I just got the call this morning. They've completed all this work. They've taken down the temporary railing up here and it really looks neat. We're very thrilled with the way that looks. There's also a scenic overlook right across the highway from that. Beautiful view of the Sangre de Cristos. And then, we'll have some signage up about both the Mary McKenney crib wall and the relocated wedge headframe. That's right, right above there. As I mentioned, our mill construction is proceeding, rod mill and ball mill. And the superstructure is up over this right now, about ready to start closing it in. So, that is proceeding.
Jane, excuse me. Where is that new mill located compared to...
The mill is actually in upper Squaw Gulch. So, where that relocated highway...if you're headed towards Victor, if you look off to the left, you can see it up there, kind of at the top of the mill. If you remember where the crusher is, I know that you were out there, but it's just a little bit west, maybe a little bit north, of where the crusher sits. So, it kind of sits right up there at the top of that valley. We also worked this year on some historic structure relocations. Where we are impacting historic structures, we try to relocate those to a location where the public will have access as well as be able to see and understand them. This is the view from the Cripple Creek Heritage Center, looking down into Poverty Gulch. So, the El Paso Mine is here. And we were able to relocate the international headframe and hoist house. This is an old powder magazine from the Mary McKenney. And then, this old ore sorting bin here or loading bin. And this is on the Gold Camp Trail. So, we've got some signs out there. People can walk down Poverty Gulch. That's a trail that we have developed in cooperation with the city of Cripple Creek. We also moved the Ankoria Leland headframe. I don't know why I've got it. Somehow, there's an automatic trip on that. The Ankoria Leland headframe sits above Cripple Creek. And we moved it down just to a knoll right down below where it was before. So, you can still see it on the skyline of Cripple Creek. And that was quite a feat to get that thing moved. It's a very large headframe, very substantial. So, we're very pleased about that one. The Independence Headframe sits right above Victor. It is very important to the view shed from Victor. As you can see in this picture, it started leaning a little bit to the south. And when we went up to investigate, this is what we found and...which explained why it was leaning. We're now working with the state of Colorado. They came in and did some temporary fixes to set some piers on competent ground, span that with these I-beams to try and hold that headframe in place. They've since come in, in that historic mining shaft. They use a puff foam, kind of like the insulation that you use where you pump it in and then it expands. So, they put that foam in there to kind of seal off the old shaft, cover that with cement, and now, they're backfilling that with rock. So, hopefully, we can slow down, we'll never stop, but slow down the deterioration of the ground underneath that headframe and be able to stabilize that structure. This is a structure...the site is on the National Register of Historic Places. And of course, it's very important to Victor and very important to us. So, we're really working to make sure that that thing stays standing. Also, the American Eagles. We've had that closed this fall and spring for some repairs. The headframe, as these headframes start to do, start to shed a little...a few logs here and there. And Ray's wife had to point out to us that perhaps maybe things were falling off the headframe because all of us never noticed. But we did have our contractor come in. You could see some of the new timbers that they've installed here. And the work on the American Eagles is complete. We need to put up our fencing...put our fencing back up and then, that site will be open. The American Eagles, again, is a site that's really important to the district and it's...really sits right in the middle of the mining operation. So, you can see both the modern mining and the historic mining. And it's just a really neat place to be. And then, the other project we've been involved with this year that we're very excited about is the restoration of the Capitol Dome. And the state of Colorado has been working on restoration of the dome...of the cast iron components of the Capitol Dome that were really starting to rust and fall off in chunks. And so, we contacted them and said, hey, you know, we might be able to get some gold and regild that dome. And the dome is actually made of...these are all individual pieces of copper. And you can see just from the weathering and the hail, just got beat to the dickens. And then, the gold, over the years, has worn off as well. So, we were able to contribute to the state 75 ounces of gold. It was made into ingots and then, sent to Italy to be made into gold leaf. Apparently, the only place in the world that you can get gold leaf made is in Italy. So, that's why it was sent there. Sent back and we presented it to the state. And they have redone the copper on the dome and redone the gold leaf and have...oh, no. Oh, man. Well, you'll have to go up to the Capitol.
Somebody stole it.
Picture, if you will, a beautiful photo of the Capitol Dome gleaming in the morning sun. And it really does look...oh, and it's here. It's there.
It's just a snowy day in Denver.
I'm so sorry. The audience doesn't get it, but yes.
It's just a snowy day in Denver.
It's a snowy day in Denver, yes. It really does look fabulous and we're really thrilled with the results. One of the things...the new things for us this year is a radiation permit through the Colorado Department of Public Health. We have found low levels of radiation in the slag from our recovery process. Naturally occurring radiation in trace amounts. It's not unexpected, but it has shown up. We're not sure if it's always been there and they're just now detecting it or if it's just the nature of the rock that we're into right now. But we're getting a license from the state. Very low levels. Our employees are not even monitored. But if you do go into the refinery or if you see from the highway the refinery, it does have those radiation signs. So, we just want to make sure that everybody knows and understands what that is. Of course, living where we live, just from the, you know, the altitude as well as the geology, we're exposed to radiation just naturally up here. So, that's what we're experiencing. We continue our summer tours from Memorial Day through Labor Day through the Victor Lowell Thomas Museum. Those have been very popular. If you are interested in a tour, there's the number to make a reservation. And we do suggest that people get reservations because they are full most of the summer. We have also started...we have a little visitor center space beneath the Cripple Creek Elks in Cripple Creek. And once a month, we do different presentations there. We did have a presentation by the state architect on the restoration of the Capitol Dome. That was very interesting. We just last month had a presentation about the Myron Stratton Home. And of course, Winfield Scott Stratton made his fortune in Cripple Creek and dedicated his money to the Myron Stratton Home. We still pay royalties to the Myron Stratton Home. But our next presentation is March 22nd. And that is just a general update of the mine and the construction activities. If anybody's interested, get on our email list and you can email me. And we'll get you on the list for notification for those presentations. And we also send out just kind of weekly updates on what we have going on. Any questions?
Jane, I'm not even sure I'm smart enough to ask the question. First, thank you for the presentation. I think it was fascinating. I love the story and the history and the way forward, too. I drive up and down the pass every day. And over the years, I've always noticed these trucks with what I assume is some type of chemical that's used at the mine. Am I correct?
What you mostly see, and they sort of have...I don't know how to put it, like on the bottom. It's not flat on the bottom?
It's got that triangular shape on the bottom.
Yeah. What you mostly see is lime.
It's lime.
And that is lime that we add to the Valley Leach facility. It helps keep the pH of the solution up so it's more effective and we don't lose as much to evaporation. But that's what you see. We get...I think we're still getting about 20 deliveries a day. So, you know, you always think, well, I'll see one every hour. But then, you'll see five of them in 20 minutes. So, but that's probably what you're seeing, going back and forth.
Would you consider that a toxic material in that amount if the truck were to tip over?
And Ray may be better able to answer this, but let me...my understanding is it's dry. And if it stays dry, it's not...it's not toxic. If it gets wet and you inhale it, it is of concern. And so, we work through the sheriff's office and the, oh, the emergency planning. I can't think of what...the LEPC, what that stands for. But to let them know what kinds of chemicals and what sorts of things that we have on the road and how they deal with those if there is an issue. So, hopefully, our local folks are informed enough that they know and understand what that is. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair. I mean, lime is caustic. It's used to raise the pH. They're using it in agriculture, they're using it in cement. It's used widely, as Jane said. It's a dry product. If there were a spill and it got into the creek, it would raise the pH of the creek, but not substantially because of the amount that would be there. To call it toxic, it's not very toxic, but it does have an adverse effect.
You don't want to roll around.
It would cause a rash on your skin.
Okay.
And thirdly, when it gets wet, it's...
No, that's comforting to know. It's nothing more than lime. I thought it was something much more caustic. Thank you.
Bobby, you were next.
Thank you. Jane, you could add another slide here on all the donations you make to local community groups and stuff. I know the Woodland Aquatic Project, for instance, received funds for you for the survey that was done by Mike Perini back in 2007. And then, recently, for our business plan. So, on behalf of that, the board, I thank you very much. But also, as a city councilman, and I think in addition to that project, there's many others that you've contributed.
Lot more.
Sure. Well, and you know, I try and, you know, stick with 10, 15 minutes. But, you know, it really is a big part of what we do. We try and be part of the community. We, you know, we work here, but we also live here. So, it is important to us to stay involved.
What's an approximate number for 2013 that what you contribute to?
Oh, well, the 2013 budget was 1.5 million. I don't know that I could separate that into areas off the top of my head. It's late.
But it makes a big difference in our...
Yeah, oh, yeah. We try our best.
Hi, Jane. I just had the opportunity just a couple of weeks ago to drive through there on the new road. And I was so happy to see the crib wall reconstructed.
It looks great, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there was always such a piece of that whole area. So, I really congratulate you guys on doing that.
And that's been...that crib wall has really been a challenge because every now and again, logs would fall off. And CDOT would call me and they'd say, when are you guys going to take that thing down? It's just a hazard. And we thought, oh, geez, you know. But...and the amazing thing is, when we took it down, we really thought that we were going to end up with toothpicks. And they brought in cedar from someplace. And those logs are solid, even back into the material. So, it was a neat project.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you.
I always appreciate that, the update. Thanks, Ray, for coming too. Good to see you again.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We thank you. And we'll move on to the next agenda item. We have a presentation or announcement from the Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. And for that, I think we're going to have Terry Harrison and Debbie Miller. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. You asked when I was here last meeting, I was able to announce the award winners for the annual dinner. But we were not able to announce the students. So, you had asked us to bring that back. And I wanted Terry to come tonight and kind of fill you in, since Terry was the founder of our Wagon Boss Scholarship. Makes you sound really old, Terry.
So, Terry, please state your name and address for the record.
I think I'll do that next time, Mayor, but thank you for asking. You know, it didn't dawn on me. I don't wear this white hat very often. First of all, most of you that know me know that it doesn't really fit my personality. But it took a few years before it finally sank in what it meant to be a wagon boss. And following footsteps is Cal Elder and Clark Becker and our own Cindy Morris. And have people come after me like Bill Page and Charlie Oaks and Jim McNabb. And I remember the evening that I received the honor. Clark told me, welcome to the club. And it does mean a lot. We founded the foundation with two things in mind. And that is that the wagon boss, which is our citizen of the year, would continue on long after all of us are gone. And the other thing was the foundation, the education foundation was founded so that we might be able to help a deserving student that may not be able to continue their education with a small amount of money so that they could. And from what I've heard from the students, that small amount of money, no matter how much it was, was of great help. So, I'll let Debbie tell you this last part, but I cannot pronounce her name.
Well, let's try it together.
Okay. The 2014 recipients, one, probably a lot of you know because he's from Cripple Creek, is...
I'm from Woodland Park.
Or from Woodland Park, is Brian Cosgrove, was the recipient of a $1,000 scholarship. And this one's yours.
Our Cripple Creek and Victor High School winner is Sarah Wywias. Is how we're going to try that. I got to tell you, in my years of being able...I get the fun thing. I get to call these students and tell them that they've won. I've never had a reaction like I had from Sarah. It was screaming, crying, laughing, thank you, oh, my gosh, just unbelievable. But the other part, if you want to share, we're really going to have a special guest with us at the chamber dinner that night who's going to talk to us.
Yep. And this is going to be pretty special because the recipient of the wagon boss honor this year is Mr. Neil Levy, as all of you know. Max, his son, will be back in town. And we asked him if he would come and share with us what it meant for him to receive his scholarship. And so, we'll get to hear from Max for a few minutes.
Max was one of the recipients last year.
Max was last year's recipient, yes. So, it...and he's going to hopefully be able to tell us how much it really helped him. But other than that, that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
And congratulations to the recipients.
Yes.
And we'll move on with item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We have none. Cindy, correct?
Actually, you do have one. And you have an amended agenda at your table. We added one more item for the consent calendar. And that's agenda item C, approve the contract with Ayers Associates for the supplemental Fountain Creek analysis. If you have any questions, it is a budgeted item in the amount of $15,000 in the 2014 budget.
And each of us should have amended agenda.
And other than that, we have nothing.
Okay. And we'll move on to consent calendar.
Three items. The first is to approve the minutes of the February 20th regular meeting. Second is to approve the contract with Ingenuity for the city of Woodland Park Citywide Stormwater Master Plan. And then, the third one is what I just told you about. That's the contract with Ayers Associates for some Fountain Creek work. What questions may we answer?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah. On item B, how much was...is that contract worth? And when will completion be? When will the study be completed?
Contract amount with Ingenuity for 2014 is $193,610. Budgeted was $200,000 for this year for the first phase of the Stormwater Master Plan. They will have 12 months to complete the first part of this. And then, we anticipate the second phase, as we described in this budget season, finishing up in 2015.
In the first phase, will we have any indication of what the future capital investment requirements for Stormwater drainage or is that going to be after the second phase?
Well, it'll require a two-phase to get to the complete end. But we'll have a good indication of some of the primary needs and requirements are after the first year. We hope to have some of the projects identified so we can start some construction in 2015. And then, we'll wrap it up. And then we'll wrap it all up in, in two thousand and fifteen. So we'll have some idea at the end of two thousand and fourteen.
And then on, on item C, um, I know it was budgeted, but I can't remember what it was for. Any comment on that?
Sure. It's, it's for the next reach downstream where the improvements are, are being completed now with the FEMA project. It's what we, uh, call the Safeway Reach, the Reach Behind Safeway. We know that after the improvements to the East Fork and the main stem of Fountain Creek that we are completing right now, that the, the problems will continue downstream. This is the next reach of interest. So we're doing some preliminary work there to identify the issues and, and start developing plans to stabilize that reach of the creek.
Will that basically take you to the bridge then?
Yes, goes to Aspen Garden Way.
And that is all within the city boundaries?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Um, I'll make, uh, one comment, Bill, and you're already aware of it, so the council knows. Since we're talking about the Stormwater Master Plan, I'll just say, you know, that's, you know, it's, I think we're all very pleased that, you know, that you're on top of all that and moving forward. Mayor, actually it was at the request of two Colorado Springs City Council members last week. Uh, had a mayor, uh, meeting with Mayor Bach and had about five of us other mayors there. On storm water and the regional storm water issue. So trying to stay on, Bill, Bill's involved in a lot of meetings. David gets involved. We were in Sundown there. Any opportunity that, that I have, or I think if you guys have to kind of know what's going on there. It's important to bring that information back and, and share it. And I did that with Bill and David. Because as, as they look at regional storm water, uh, the tentacles go out. And, and you just want to know, you know, we want to make sure that they know what we're contributing. And, and, you know, and working that issue, which I think, you know, Woodland Park's been really on, on top of that to a large extent and still are. And, uh, but you know, what, what we have up here from part of Woodland Park flows down and, and that's always a big concern. But they're really trying to wrap around their arms around the regional storm water issue. And, and there's a lot of tugging and pulling that goes on down the hill. But I just thought, you know, I'd let you know that that's going on. So.
Well, you can be proud of the fact that you adopted our new drainage criteria manual recently. Far in advance, the Colorado Springs has been working on for a very long time. So congrats to all of you for doing that. Thank you.
So have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Move in a second, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we have no unfinished business. And, uh, one item that we do have is, uh, that we started discussing last meeting was the Creative Arts District funding. And for that, uh, our Director of the DDA and Economic Development, Brian Flair is going to talk to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On your desktop, the budget as outlined, as you recall, Councilman Bravetto had submitted a request for twenty thousand dollars above what had been previously requested, uh, in the two thousand and fourteen budget for Main Street. Um, I've outlined two budgets. So if there are any particular questions in terms of what we're looking at in terms of line item requests. With the Creative Arts budget, I worked with Ralph Holloway, who is active with the Creative Arts Group. They have submitted a letter of intent. They're in the process currently. Um, there will be fifteen communities selected from that letter of intent process. And then five of those will be asked to submit full, or all fifteen will be requesting full applications. And they'll select five of those fifteen. So this is in an effort to move forward with that application sequence. And again, uh, I've broken out the Creative Arts District budget for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and the Main Street budget as well. I'll note that under the Main Street, for example, the ten thousand for Community Assessment Council appropriated that budget in two thousand and fourteen. The administrative support, conference training, and the boot camp for Main Street, uh, is offset by the RBD grant. So we're fully funded through the application for Main Street. Uh, the dollars that Councilman Bravetto specifically had requested are allocated in two thousand and fourteen, ten thousand, under the, the Creative Arts District budget. And then additional ten thousand for the next year, uh, in the event that that application is not approved in this year. And that's just a point of note. That is not unusual. Communities apply. They don't always get into the first round, but there's been a lot of momentum, a lot of activity. So we anticipate that we would want to do that in two thousand and fifteen as well. What questions can I answer at this time?
Yes, sir. So year two is twenty thousand, not ten?
It's actually ten. It's a combination.
It's ten and ten?
That's correct. It's a total of twenty.
And the contract employee?
Under Creative Arts, the, uh, would be somebody that they would hire if this budget is approved at sixty-three hundred per year at that fifteen dollars an hour.
So that would just be a part-time?
That's correct. And we have something like that now. We've just hired an individual for Main Street. They are a contract employee. They're not a city employee. And that's, uh, we feel that's best at this time.
Brian, when you say they, are you talking about Creative District Board?
Yes. They'll form a committee. And from that, there'll be an operating budget, which is we've laid out here. And in anticipation of the, the applicant, the full application that, uh, they'll be soliciting in, in the next sixty days.
And the Main Street administrative support, that individual could not do both the Main Street and the Creative Arts District administrative requirements?
It's felt that we, we really wanted to separate those two. Uh, there's a lot of momentum going with Main Street and as there is with Creative Arts. And they're really two distinct areas. Um, given the budget that I have for Main Street, which is, is approximately ten hours a week. We felt it appropriate to really create two distinct contract positions there.
Why would Main Street take sixteen hours and the Creative Arts District application that we haven't even been considered for yet, take forty-two weeks?
They, the sixteen weeks is our contract, or our deadline for application is July first. So that, I programmed that July first. This anticipates, if they do not receive the application, they'll submit, they'll continue the process. And that's traditionally how Creative Arts communities come into line. Um, there's a, there's a public relations process, there's training, there's a number of, uh, steps along the way. That if they don't get the first application, they'll continue through two thousand and fourteen and then into two thousand and fifteen. And then re-submit in March of two thousand and fifteen. So that's the, that's the roadmap.
That's the forty-two weeks then.
That's correct.
And, and one more question. When is the application due for Creative Arts?
The, the application for Creative Arts is due in July as well.
Yeah, and it looks like the, the skill set is different too. For the Creative Arts, it's mostly CAD, web design type of thing. What, what would be the nature of the one for the, the, uh, Main Street?
For Main Street, a lot of.
Just a point of clarification. It says supporting the CAD application. That's not CAD as in computer design. That's Creative Arts District.
Sorry about my engineering background.
Yeah, the acronym, Creative Arts District.
So again, I, I go back to the personnel cost of the CAD. You're, you're asking for ten thousand dollars for two thousand and fourteen. How soon would you want to hire this individual that would be working for the CAD application?
If it's approved this evening, it'll be, they'll hire almost immediately. They'll go into that process. And, uh, that person will begin working with the Creative Arts District immediately.
Once a letter of intent, if we get our letter of intent, is a powerful lot of it. And we have to go through, submit the real application. A lot of administrative work. In particular, a lot of stuff we've got to gather.
Paperwork and stuff.
You have any interest, people in mind that might? I, I, I know that there are. I'm, I'm active with the Main Street group. Ralph Holloway and his team and Gary have been involved with Creative Arts. I know, I know, Ken, that there is a lot of interest in that. I don't know if you were in the, the meeting we had here at City Hall where we had eighty-some individuals. There is a lot of community interest in it. So I know there'll be somebody very interested in filling this position.
So when you say they, in this case, you, you do mean the C V D?
That's correct. The committee, yeah.
Committee board, alright.
Right. That's correct.
And that board would then have hiring authority?
They would work through a process and hire a contract employee. That's correct.
And office space, is that out of your office?
No, it would be out of, uh, I, yet to be determined, but it's not anticipated that it would be out of a city, city office.
Other questions for Brian?
Yes. Is twenty thousand dollars necessary today? Or is it ten thousand dollars today and then additional ten thousand dollars if we have to go into a second year of the application process?
That, it's ten thousand in two thousand and fourteen and then ten thousand in two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, sir.
I guess two comments. Uh, first off, I believe that it's the decision of council to, uh, provide the funding, uh, seed money, if you will, for this. Uh, you know, it appears that it's a two-year, two years worth of seed money. So I hope that that is what it sticks to. And I guess that's for, you know, the future councils to discuss. I would see that, I, I, I would think that regular reports would be something that, uh, council would probably want to see happen. Um, probably by the board, you know, some, whoever the, uh, Chairman of the Board is to come forward or Chairperson of the Board to come forward. Uh, maybe on a, I don't know, uh, every couple of months or when there's significant milestones hit or something. Just to kind of keep everybody up to date as to how the money's being spent, what progress they're making, those types of things. And that's just a suggestion.
That's easy to do, let me just, that's easy to do because the requirements of Main Street and Creative Arts District is that they've got to do reporting to those agencies. And it'd be the very same thing that you guys were getting. So they're required to do.
So let me just follow up, Mayor, on your question. So this is, these boards and what they're doing are really under your auspices as, as kind of the city. Uh, employee, economic development and, and DDA, is that, is that?
The budget line items will be within the, the economic development. Just like Main Street, we have a line item, there'll be a line item in Creative Arts.
Yeah. The last point I'd make is, you know, as far as the ten thou, the twenty thousand goes, I appreciate the fact you've laid out what you think it's going to take from a seed perspective and how long. I think that a second ten thousand comes up in budget discussions going forward.
The second ten thousand for the?
For the next year.
Fifteen, yeah.
Yes, John. When would you expect the number of applicants to be, uh, downsized to the five that will get the designation?
Do you know the answer to that, Gary?
You know, you talk, well, you talk about Creative Arts District or Main Street?
Creative Arts.
Creative Arts? Uh, they do this every two years.
No, this, the fifty, they're going to get down to fifteen here.
They'll get down fifteen, then they'll tailor down to five within, within that two-year period of time.
I believe it's, I, this application, within about thirty days, they're going to be at that, they're going to announce the fifteen that will be asked.
On letter of intent. There's a big difference, one is kind of seeing and, and approving our letter of intent to go forward from there. So it can submit out.
Were you referring to the fifteen that are, the fifteen, getting it down to fifteen?
No, I was referring, getting it down to five.
Five.
Yeah, that's this year. It's a two thousand and fourteen allocation. That there'll be five, uh, communities that will be brought into Creative Arts under CCI.
And that's when we've got to prove. Before we designated a Creative Arts community, that's when we got to prove that, that timeframe in there. We got to prove that we're worthy of, of being that designated.
There's a milestone.
There's a lot of work that goes on to make that possible.
So, so if that doesn't happen for whatever reason, then I guess the next ten thousand dollars, if it's a two-year process, probably doesn't happen.
Well, if we don't get the letter of, in other words, they turn down a letter of intent, they anticipate that try it again next year for the following, that's the reason.
And that's where council will then get to make a decision on the two thousand and fifteen budget, whether you want to make that second attempt.
But circle back again to the, the fifteen that will be selected from a, a number of applicants for a letter of intent.
That's ongoing right now.
It's ongoing right now.
Within thirty days, I think it's, I think within thirty days, they'll hit that fifteen mark. They'll make that decision. And then they'll invite those fifteen to submit a full application.
What, what's your impression on how many communities have applied?
I, I don't know the number. We went to a, a conference, uh, about a month ago, several of us from the city. And, uh, in talking to their director, there were about twelve communities at that time that had expressed an interest. I suspect it's going to be somewhere in the twelve to twenty range when it comes, when it comes down to reality. I think we've got a, based on the metrics of, of what we've seen, we've got a reasonable shot. But it's not unusual to submit. Colorado Springs did this. They didn't get it in the first year. They went into the, they had to go into the second year as an example. Um, you know, it's not a new, even under the Main Street, it's oftentimes you don't get it in the first year. So.
And I apologize because I did not attend Gary's presentation. But what is our return on our investment? What is our anticipated return? Are we simply then going to be given the opportunity to apply for grants? There's no guarantee that we get this back in X number of years or X number of decades, correct?
In the resolution, the first three quarters of that resol, you know, the resolution, I mean, I listed, uh, the benefits to the community for the Creative Arts District, as well as Main Street. So if you have an opportunity to read that, that's.
And some of those were very subjective. Uh, I'm looking at dollars.
I, you get selected as a Creative Arts District, you create a boundary. In fact, the discussions right now, it's going to be very similar to what the Main Street boundary is. You are eligible for, uh, funds from CCI and then matching funds from Betr Foundation and other foundations.
CCI is ten thousand dollars over two, ten thousand dollars a year for two years. And the one from, um, from the Betr Foundation is a matching fund, ten thousand dollars every, you know, for two years, each per year. That's only the beginning. I mean, we've already seen people already donate five thousand dollars because we were serious about doing Main Street. I, I have a feeling the same thing's going to happen in Creative Arts District. I think there are going to be people because they know we're serious, we're putting seed money into it. That I think there are going to be other people out there. I've heard that there are going to be other people that will be contributing as well. If we didn't have that seed money, they'll say, yeah, you guys are in serious, why should I invest, you know, in this, in this thing?
Ms. Harvey, they, I think the key, as I understand it, in Creative Arts is identifying the arts as an industry. And this gets, it gets the opportunity to basically do a business model to perfect that, uh, industry and then to bring it into the community. And, uh, it's not anticipated that this would require city funding in the future. It is a grassroots organization and this allows that to move forward.
And I think, um, Gary, you're, you can correct me. I think, I mean, it's not that it's, it's continuous grants to fund things. It's, it's that you create this, these districts in an environment in which you get more businesses in and, and things happening where that you actually end up with getting the return. You know, through taxes and, and all of that things. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, the whole purpose of, of the Main Street and Creative Arts District is to, uh, improve the economic development of the, of the city. And that's what it's all about. Uh, that's redevelopment downtown area so that we can improve our economic development. So it's an investment in our future, really, is what it is.
I just want to go back to the mechanics, just so I understand a little better. So we're going to submit, the, the board will submit a letter of intent.
That's been done.
Okay. And we're going to find out in thirty days, give or take, whether we've made the shortlist. And what happens after the shortlist?
There'll, there'll be fifteen communities selected to submit a full application. Five of those will be selected.
So what happens, and I'm looking at Gary or, like, maybe you can ask, if we don't get selected this year, then what? I guess I'm just thinking, should we allocate the ten thousand dollars now? No, without knowing whether we're going to get selected for the full-on application, knowing that next year we'd do it again. Um, and I would guess that this plan would just push out two years, or push out a, a year, and then we'd have two years after that.
I, I can address that. The ten thousand really gets us to the final, the final application.
Exactly.
Right. And, uh, if we do. Right, and if we do not, if we're, if the city is not selected, then we're making an investment to, to start up again, under the two hundred, two, two thousand fifteen budget, to, to go at it again, for the next application round.
So, should we make, if we move forward and said, you know what, we're going to allocate ten thousand this year for the budget, should we make a contingent on the fact that they actually, you know, were one of the fifteen shortlisted? And then that way, if next year, you know, they're going to go after it again, it would just come through the budget process and?
That, that makes sense.
That's a council.
We've got a gap in, between the fifteen and the five, that we don't know what the next step's going to be. What I would tell you is if, if you allocated those funds tonight, that if we weren't part of that, there wouldn't be anything spent, there would be no need to do that. But your point is well taken, we could certainly delay the decision on the allocation until we know whether or not we've gone from the fifteen to the five. What I don't know is the, the, the specific mechanics of, once we're selected, how much, how much time do we lose by not having those funds in place to get cranking on that, that, the full application? So what I, what I can tell you is we're not going to spend it if we have no need to.
Well, I understand, I just, I don't want to see us go out and hire somebody and they start working and, you know, we spend money in the next sixty days and then we find out, well, we're, we're, didn't even make the shortlist of fifteen. That's all I'm suggesting.
Counter debate.
We just wait on that.
If I might, Councilman Smith, the, there is communities that show that they are actively in the game, so to speak, under Creative Arts, even if we don't make the fifteen list, will be highly regarded, in my opinion, in two thousand fifteen. So, if you budget the ten thousand this year, even if we don't make the cut, but yet we continue a program element, that will, will, I believe, bear fruit for two thousand fifteen in that application. Now, you'll have a, you'll have the, as a council, you'll have the ability to decide on that second tier of ten thousand for two thousand fifteen, and that's obviously a council prerogative. But, are you suggesting that the ten thousand would be held back until we made the cut?
I'm just thinking if it's a two-year thing, and it's twenty thousand dollars is the investment that we're looking to make, and we go ahead and authorize ten thousand now, and the ten thousand's spent, and we didn't make the shortlist, and next year we go ahead and, oh, now we're going to make, now, now we're going to resubmit, and we make the shortlist, so now it's, now it's a ten thousand and another ten thousand, so, you know, I'm just wondering how much money we would actually spend, and I mean, David, I know you're staying on top of this, but once it's allocated, I mean, really, this money's going to a board, and they're going to go hire people, and they're going to start sending people to conferences and all kinds of things. And I don't know who controls, really, you know, once the money's been allocated to the board. And so, my only suggestion was, you know, once we make the shortlist, I mean, I'm all in, I mean, let's, let's go ahead and allocate the funds. If we don't make the shortlist this year, what are we going to spend the money on, that's, other than it's just going to sit?
That's the distinction I, I just wanted to make for the record, is if, if you don't make the shortlist, you could use those funds to be proactive, because that will be recognized by C C I next year.
So this could go from twenty thousand to thirty thousand, potentially, I mean, because in, in seed money.
I, well.
The reason I say that is if we spend ten thousand this year, and we're not, we don't make the shortlist, but we spend it because we're going to, we're going to put our best foot forward.
Right.
And then the next year rolls around and we, we make the shortlist, and we spend ten thousand, then the next year we need another ten thousand, so it's really a thirty.
But at some point, you anticipate that it does end.
Well, I know, but it looks like it's a two-year thing from the time you make the shortlist and, and your application's approved, and you become a, a district, you know, it's a twenty thousand dollar thing. So if everything goes smoothly, it's twenty thousand is what you've proposed. If everything doesn't go smoothly, it keeps going.
Right, I, I mean, you make a good point.
Well, when we're talking shortlist here, it's the fifteen.
Correct.
The first step.
That's correct.
Before getting to five.
Because if we get to five.
We're in.
We're in.
You're in.
It's like American Idol.
It's tiered, I mean, it's, it takes about three years to get the full designation, but yeah, what's your five, Gary?
But the first ten is doing the application anyway, according to this, and whether it's done this year or if, don't make the, the shortlist is next year, but we just finished the application a year early, I don't think it adds another ten thousand.
It could just be updated, something like that, is what you're?
So we're going to, we're going to work on the application and spend the money without knowing if we're.
With hopes that we will get it.
If we're ever shortlisted.
I, I, I think the one sticking point for me is that making the, the list of fifteen would justify hiring someone. If we don't make that list, why would we want to continue to pay someone to go to conferences?
Again, it's, and again, council prerogative, but it, it gets you into the spotlight with C C I, and it, with some investment dollars. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I see how it works in the, in the state. Communities that show an active presence, they typically get selected. And I, I think we've got a reasonable shot this year, but I, you know, it depends on other communities that have already done some previous work.
I've talked to other communities that have Creative Arts Districts, and quite frankly, everything I know about our board that we have here and the people that we've got here, we got it so far over the ones I've talked to. And that includes Main Street too, because I've talked to communities of Main Street. We look like Golden Boys compared to those people there, and already, that's.
Well, maybe kind of try to wrap this up a little bit, because, is, is, I'm, I'm, you know, it's ten thousand dollars, I mean, I, I, we all look at all that money, and, you know, we try to make the right decisions on all that spending. I'm, you know, with the work that Gary's done, and, and the investment, and the amount of people that's involved, and, and with Brian being involved, I mean, I'll be candid, I, I trust them to, for ten thousand dollars, to make the right decisions and, and, you know, as we move forward, and, and that they will, you know, will take that and, as it's needed, they'll, they'll use it for good things, and, and it's not that it'll be there for the next step. That's just my thinking.
Well, let me make the motion then. I move that we authorize, from the two thousand fourteen budget, ten thousand dollars for the seed money for the Creative Art District, and fifteen thousand dollars for the Main Street program.
Point of clarification, we, we don't need a motion to include the, the Main Street program. That ten thousand is already in the budget, you've approved that, and the five thousand was the grant for the regional, the, the R B D Regional Building Department. So it really is just the first part.
Amended. Okay, I make the motion that we approve ten thousand dollars for the Creative Art District to assist in the production of the, the application.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion, yes, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll, I'll support, I just, you know, if we're not shortlisted, I, I will feel like we've, I, I know we've got to spend some money, I'm fine with that, but if we go out and hire somebody, and, you know, they're just taking notes and doing those kinds of things, and we're paying somebody this year, and we're not putting an application together, I mean, I think that that's not necessarily the best use of funds. So, I would hope that the board understands that, and will be very frugal with these dollars, if, for whatever reason, we're not shortlisted, and down to the fifteen, that's what I consider the shortlist. I think if we're shortlisted to the fifteen, we got to put an application together, we got to go for it. But that, I hope that's what happens, I, we're really not going to be in control of that, I don't believe, and, you know, that would weigh maybe on the discussion of, for the monies going forward in the next year.
Thanks, Gary, I agree with that.
Any further discussion? And we will take, yes, John?
Question of Gary and, and or Brian. So that this person who would be hired is necessary for completing the full application.
The initial, well, yeah.
Yes?
The answer's yes.
Alright.
Any other? We will take a vote, C D D.
Everyone understand the motion? Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Braveto? Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, yeah. And, and, you know, appreciate that really good discussion, and with everybody, it's, it's, it's good. Anyway, we'll move on to the next item. Ordinance on initial posting, item eight, and it's, consider ordinance number twelve oh nine, and for that, we're going to hear from Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a couple of comments before Sally begins her presentation. And as a reminder, we sat here nearly six months ago in a joint work session with the Planning Commission, and the question that was put at this joint session was, should Woodland Park allow accessory dwelling units? The recommendation that came out of that joint session was that we asked the Planning Department to put that into the queue for the Planning Commission, and so in December, the Planning Commission began to address the ordinance for A D U's. And they invested seven hours of deliberation, so I think we've got a well-reasoned ordinance. The important questions that were asked there are being addressed relative to density and parking, I think were two major questions. And so Sally's going to be reviewing the ordinance here at the first reading.
And I would just add, I think, you know, normally, we're, we're just kind of keeping it at, at a very high level on first reading, you know, to see if we think it should go forth and, and then have all the, the, you know, big discussions at the public hearing when everybody's here, and so, you know, Sally knows.
Thank you.
Take it away, Sally.
Thank you. I will step through first the process, as John mentioned, we did meet four times, first with the joint work session, and then last Thursday, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval. Tonight is the first reading, and then the public hearing on the twentieth. The benefits of accessory dwelling units are multi-fold. They provide for income for people to be able to perhaps afford their mortgage, and supports the needs of extended family members, whether it's an elder person in your family or a younger student or, or family member. And we do have a demand for this type of unit with increasing rental unit needs. We first looked at many, many communities throughout the state that have accessory dwelling units, and I've included in your packet a comparison table of a few cities, including Colorado Springs, Golden, Glenwood Springs, Teller County, Denver, and they are very, quite, quite a lot. But we were able to pull from those communities standards that we felt were reasonable to put together for Woodland Park in order to protect our neighborhood character and come forward with a good system. The ordinance is structured so that in the beginning, it talks to the recitals of how it meets the comprehensive plan and supports those goals, and that is known as accessory dwelling units are allowed only within the unit, the existing home, or an addition to the existing home, or if you have a detached garage, then they can remodel the upper level of that detached garage similar to a carriage house. It does not propose that a separate cottage would be allowed as an accessory dwelling unit underneath, under this ordinance. There are three sections to the ordinance that amend various parts of our zoning regulations. The first section deals with the definitions in the zoning regulations, so it is clearly spelled out as to what is allowed for either within the home, an addition to the home, or the detached garage with the upper level modified. And then clearly spells out what the habitable space is, that includes a second complete kitchen within that unit as the accessory dwelling unit to the primary unit. The second section amends the use table so that these are only permitted within the service, suburban residential or urban residential, single-family areas, so not allowed in any of the multifamily, mobile home areas. We did include permitted conditionally in three of the commercial areas. That would only be for a home that is existing in the neighborhood commercial, central business district, or community commercial zones. The third section of the ordinance establishes the use regulations and the performance standards. Section A describes the purpose of the ordinance, and again, it, the main purpose is to allow for this option and while protecting the character of the neighborhood. Section B is how the permit, a zoning development permit, is submitted to the planning office and how that is reviewed through our planning office, and how it is approved and then issued. If it is denied, the applicant has the opportunity to reapply, perhaps make some corrections to what they are proposing, or if they feel that there was an error in the way that we evaluated or reviewed their application, they can appeal that decision through the Board of Adjustment, which is a standard procedure in the zoning regulations. They are required to sign an affidavit saying that they are going to comply with the regulations that are set forth in the standards. There is also a certificate of occupancy that will be issued if there is a remodel associated with this. Section C is about an annual renewal. This is necessary for a, a person, the owner, who has an accessory dwelling unit, to renew it annually in order that it maintains its status and it maintains its consistency with the regulations. So each year by February first, they will come in, renew their A D U, and re-sign their affidavit saying that they are complying with the regulations. An example is that maybe their tenants had changed that year, and they have more vehicles than one vehicle the previous year, we have to ensure that their parking standard is still met. Now we're moving into the meat of this ordinance, which deals with the specific standards. There are nine specific standards for an A D U. First and foremost is the design and appearance of that A D U so that it is consistent with the existing primary home. Second is that the owner must occupy either the primary home or the A D U, and once again, they will be signing the affidavit notarized so that they will comply with the standards. The size of the A D U will be smaller than the primary unit. It cannot be more than forty percent of the overall area of the single-family dwelling, or, or nor more than eight hundred square feet, or less than three hundred square feet. There is an allowance for a minor variance to give us a little bit of flexibility under circum, certain circumstances. The number of occupants allowed in the A D U is four. The parking requirement is based on the number of vehicles that the occupant of the A D U has. So if it is a single person with one vehicle, then they only need one off-street parking space. But if it is leased or occupied by two people and they both have vehicles, then they will need to have two off-street parking spaces that are constructed to city driveway standards. Number six is, relates to the density control, and this is a fairly unique aspect to this code. We only found one other community that monitored the density, and it was based on spacing of the A D U's. So we're proposing. So we're proposing that the, in the suburban residential area, that these be spaced at least six hundred feet apart. In the urban residential area, it would be three hundred feet apart, which is about the length of a typical block in the older part of town in urban residential areas. Also, for the commercial homes located in the commercial zones, that they would be three hundred feet apart, the length of a football field. And this is the community that has applied density standards. This is Boulder, and you can see the dots on the map and how that has preserved spacing throughout their community for their accessory dwelling units. We would also map the ones that we issue in Woodland Park and would monitor our map similarly. We also wanted to show you what it might look like in Woodland Park, and Mr. Bravetto gave us the permission to utilize his home as an example in the suburban residential zone. This is a radius of six hundred feet. So you can see that if he had an ADU, then about three homes to either side of him would not be allowed to have an ADU in order to maintain that spacing. Number seven is the number of ADUs per lot. There's only one allowed, so you can't put in multiple units. And in the older part of town, there are some homes that would potentially straddle a lot line. If that were the case, then would require that that lot line be vacated and those lots be combined into one. With respect to home occupations, we would allow home occupations as long as they meet our current standards as a home occupation in either the single-family dwelling unit or the ADU, but not both. Also, we would like to encourage a provision of barrier-free ADUs in order to accommodate folks with disabilities. The last section is that any legal non-conforming ADUs that are in existence at the time of this ordinance will continue to exist. We will map them, and they will just, they will not be allowed to expand, but they will be accepted into the system, just as if we do when we had a new sign ordinance and the legal non-conforming signs were able to be absorbed into the current regulations. So with that, be happy to answer questions.
Yes, Gary.
Well, would you consider if someone had an ADU attached to a building, would that be classified as a multifamily unit then?
No, it is not. It is still a single-family unit. This allows for a second kitchen within that single-family unit. It is not con-zoned multifamily. It is not considered multifamily.
Does that affect the property values of the houses in the area that have an ADU? Because we have to ask real estate agencies.
You, yes. I mean, for property values are based upon the condition of the property, the location of the property, the size, various lots of factors go into a value. Some people may think that if they have a second kitchen or living quarters within their home, that that can generate a higher price in the market and increase the value.
Just a little scenario. If in fact you have an ADU there, you say you have up to four people in that ADU. A guy could rent that out to four college students, and now you've got, you know, there may be a guy next door that lives in this may not appreciate having four college students, you know, living in that unit like that, which could be considered, I think, multifamily use. Now, so that's why I'm saying, does that affect property values? Does it affect the ability of people to sell in that neighborhood? See, when we do this, my concern is, what's the impact on other people? And I'm concerned about that. What's the impact on everybody else if we allow this? And that's not to say that people aren't doing this stuff already. It's just not legalized. But I just wonder about that, if anybody even considers.
Well, and I think, you know, you're hearing that question, so that might be something that you would want to try to maybe be able to express an answer to with a little more depth, perhaps than at the, at the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah. I recognize this is the initial hearing, so it's just preliminary, you know, make sure all bases are covered type of thing. And so, you know, especially as you can already have four unrelated, up to five unrelated people living in a single-family housing now, so that doesn't make any difference, other than they get another kitchen. But what are the rights of homeowners associations and one saying, we still don't want ADUs in our homeowners association? Do they have the right to do that?
Absolutely. Covenants do trump city codes, so it is up to the homeowners association to enforce their own covenants.
Okay, and then the second one has to do with the space, the forty percent, and no more than eight hundred square feet, no more than, less than four hundred. I was looking at, you know, scenario, sometimes you have one floor that a family can live on, and you have a finished basement that is totally available for something else. So if you've got fifteen hundred square feet or whatever on the first floor, and you get fifteen hundred square feet in the second bottom floor, why limit it to eight hundred? Why not allow them to be able to rent the whole place out? And in that regard also, a lot of stuff in the basement, sometimes you've got storage place in the utility rooms, and would that count in the total space that where your calculation would be based on?
First, first part of your question is that is why we have a little bit of flexibility to be able to allow for minor variations to that area. And second part of your question with respect to the storage, that would not count toward the ADU.
Storage utility rooms.
Yeah, so, so in, to use your numbers, fifteen hundred square feet in the lower level, then the flexibility exists to call that the ADU.
Okay, so you can't go beyond the eight hundred.
It exceeds eight hundred, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Kim.
I just have a fundamental question. I know we'll get into this more at the, at the public hearing, but it seems like certainly we need lower-cost housing in this community. We've all known that and talked about that for years. And now we have a huge complex going in, one hundred and sixty-eight units or whatever it is of apartments, and possibly another HUD project, I think on sixty-seven North, to fulfill these needs. So, and that's by private enterprise. So I'm just questioning a little bit as to why we need to do this and in effect encourage people to do this by providing this method. Do we need it?
This is.
Just a statement, you don't have to get into it tonight, but that's a question I have.
Yes, and just briefly, this is a different option. This, these are really typically known as mother-in-law units, and we are seeing more and more with our demographics changing that extended families are beginning to live together.
Okay.
And in this day, right now, our zoning regulations don't allow for a grandparent to be able to live in their home with, with an additional kitchen.
Don't you think a fair amount of that's going on now anyway, without any problem? But we're not encouraging it.
The Director of Planning might.
Well, I, I mean, I think it just comes down to, in this case, a second kitchen. The fact of the matter is, you can have your, you can move in with your kids or have your parent move in and, you know, they just have to use, everybody's got to use one kitchen to be legal.
Well, I only, I only say that I, and you've done terrific research, so this is only one example. I did talk to a city councilman in Denver, in Edgewater, and their number-one problem is ADUs. Now, they have a different demographic than we do, certainly, but it's a big issue for them. They spend a lot of their time dealing with problems, people running extension courts from their house over to this place, and all kinds of things. I don't need to get into all that tonight, but, and that's just one community, so do that as it may.
I look forward to the public hearing. Having said that, I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance twelve oh nine on initial posting to amend chapters eighteen point oh six, eighteen point oh nine, and eighteen point three-three of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to allow for accessory dwelling units in certain zone districts within the city, provided the accessory dwelling unit meets certain standards, and set the public hearing for March twentieth.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And moving on to item eight B, ordinance number, consider ordinance number twelve ten on initial posting, and for that, we're going to hear from our Director of Utilities, Kip Wiley.
Thank you. In addition to eight B, I'd like to present eight C at the same time. They kind of go hand in hand, makes sense, but at the same time, require two separate motions for each one. The first one, eight B, is ordinance twelve ten. It establishes an easement across the Impact Christian Church on Highway sixty-seven. There is currently an eight-inch water line and an eight-inch sewer line in that easement or in that parcel of property, and we, and they would like to grant us an easement for that, to maintain it. Along with that, to the south of that property is the Day Spring Church's property, Lot Two, in the Day Spring Christian Fellowship subdivision, and that also has a small portion on the east side of the property along Highway sixty-seven, uh, west side, excuse me, eight-inch water line as well, and they would like to grant an easement to us as well. We recommend approval of ordinance twelve ten and twelve eleven on initial posting and set the public hearing for March twentieth. Any questions?
Any questions for Kip? Motion?
Just real quick. You mean, we put in water and sewer lines without having an easement?
They put in water and sewer lines.
Oh, they put in, okay.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve ten on initial posting and set the public hearing date for March twentieth.
I will second that. Motion and second, any further discussion? Then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve eleven on initial posting and set the public hearing date for March twentieth.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? We'll take a vote.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Nothing listed at this time for new business. And do we have any public comments? Anyone would like to, don't have anyone signed up, but if anyone would like to come forward and speak, I'd give you that opportunity at this time. Hearing none, then we will move on to reports. Got a couple of things. First, I'll recognize the art that's on our wall over there, and that's from Kate and Kumphy, who's a second grader.
Wow.
At Gateway Elementary, so that's, that's pretty cool. And then we received a number of thank you notes and letters and cards for the Community Investment Fund, and I'd just like to recognize those. We got one from the Mountaintop Cycling Club, from the Colorado Mounted Rangers, from Habitat for Humanity, from Help the Needy, from Choices, from, let's see, this one was from, let's see, this is from Junior Achievement, and this one's from the Community Cupboard. And if anybody would like to take a look at those, I mean, I'll just summarize it. In all, they, you know, recognize the, that our contributions, the investment that we make with them is very helpful for the work that they do in the community. And so, it's very nice that we've done that, and it's very nice that they've recognized the contributions that we made. We have some upcoming events. Saturday, March the eighth, Winter's Farmers Market, that's at the Cultural Center from nine to one. Monday, March the tenth, Community Blood Drive, Our Lady of the Woods Catholic Church, that's from two to seven. It's free. Friday, March the fourteenth, it's the Chamber Annual Dinner, and that's down at the Cheyenne Mountain Resort, and they need RSVP by Monday. Okay? And that's going to be a pretty big event this year, I understand.
We're breaking all the ten minutes records.
Very good. And then Tuesday, March the eighteenth, is the Chamber Business After Hours. That's in the Woodland Exchange Building, that's from five thirty to seven. And then Wednesday, March the nineteenth, is the City of Woodland Park City Council Candidate Forum. That's going to be here from six to eight P.M. And I think that's all I have tonight. Oh, and I will, I'm going to miss the next meeting, so the public hearings that we're going to have at the next meeting, I won't be here, so Mayor Pro Tim Smith will run those meetings, and I'm going to be out of town that night.
As they say, God willing, the creek don't rise.
Anything? Gary?
Well, when I first came on the council, I had brought up the idea of looking, and we took care of this somewhat last week, or about the possibility of eliminating jail time for certain violations of ordinance, one of which I mentioned is snow being put in the street, and the other one I mentioned stray, stray dogs escaping from your neighborhood, that there was up to six month to a year jail sentence on either case. And I was asking if we could look at those ordinances and kind of remove that, and I just wanted to get consensus here, if you thought that was a good idea, so we can charge our wonderful city manager here and maybe take a look at that. We've done it, was two, the last session, we did it for.
Traffic.
Traffic. I would like to expand that, too. Let's take a look at all those ordinances, will that apply? Where, will it make sense to eliminate that sentencing? Let's take a look at that and come up with a proposal removing that.
How big a job would that be, David?
It's no small task, and I'd like, and certainly we could take that on as a task if the council wants us to do that. I would tell you that it's, it's not going to be immediate results. We can look at them one at a time over some course of time, and I can't even begin to tell you what that course of time is, and I don't want Bob to even guess at it at this point.
I'd just like to start that process, that's all.
Sure.
Not to be completed by this stretch. But I'd like to see, because I mentioned this two years ago, and, you know, I'd like to see something done.
I, I guess my thought is, I don't know if it's worth spending a great deal of time, money, and energy as it relates to the city attorney and others. I mean, I would venture to say that the last time we put somebody in jail, it relates to a stray dog or somebody blowing snow out into the road is probably never.
Well, my contention is to write an ordinance, be serious about it. Don't write an ordinance and then not enforce it.
Well, I, I think that it's just, it's there.
I think just we need to clean it up.
Well, I, I don't agree.
You disagree.
I did.
I did. But I thought it would be probably, I'd clean our ordinances up.
Other thoughts by council members?
Well, when we approved the two thousand thirteen budget, we had a big slug in there for looking at ordinances, and that was one of the issues I thought we were going to look at. I could do a word search of our municipal code in any time for jail or incarceration and just come in the next week and say, take jail out of all of these ordinances. So it's, you know, in that sense.
I'm sure, I'm sure the lawyers would want to have a say on that, but, but, you know, it should be doable. I know it's probably not going to have any impact on anything, but I agree conceptually with, with what Gary is saying here, but.
I guess my question to you would be, you made the statement, it probably wouldn't do anything, so I don't know, I'm not sure what the goal is, what are we trying to accomplish with that, but we will defer to the council on that. We, in my time here, we've not put anybody in jail for those things, and there may be some that it makes sense to do, but I would still solicit your guidance on that, because
that have it with, without great difficulty, and then take a look at those, um, to decide, you know, whether something should change.
A great number of them have it, and it would be a big exercise. I favor it, but I don't know, um, the answer to the question-
The cost.
-the city manager raised, I couldn't speculate on it.
It's cost and time and, and, but, you know, and I'll just say, I don't know where I come down, but, you know, Gary's, I think Gary's comment is, is correct in that, you know, you do, these things are serious. I'm not, I think, you know, sometimes you use a, a standard wording on some things, and, and, you know, it's, it's, maybe it shouldn't be there.
And the contention I have, as a citizen-
Yeah.
Uh, I read these ordinances, I look at that, says, what? My dog gets out of here, I, I can run the risk going to jail for a year? You guys gotta be kidding me.
I think they should go to jail for a year.
My dogs run away three times, I pay the fines in the shelter, and that's it.
Todd's my counsel.
I rest my case.
Um, yeah, twenty, sir, from Todd. I like Bob's comment about doing a word search, but he also said we had a slug of money in last year to review codes, and I guess nothing happened. And it was far down, far down a priority list, I'm sure, and rightly, so.
I just, I hate to see us spend money on something that has very little to no effect.
Is it my turn now? Yes, sir. Okay.
Um, yeah, on, on the line of, of municipal code, uh, back in August of two thousand twelve, uh, one of the business owners on Main Street had a complaint about skateboarders coming down right in front of their shops, and when they opened the door, you know, their customers could get hit by skateboards and things like that. Uh, we've, we've brought this to the city's attention, and, and I believe they were working on it with that individual, I just don't know what the conclusion was, uh, and if, if you could let us know that, because this is a serious concern, somebody could get hurt.
Sure, and that, that business owner, we've not talked in some time, and so I think, I'm not aware that the issue has continued. What we did do was, we put some information out through the school district, uh, to disperse to the students, because in her description, not to profile, but in her description, they were younger folks who probably could have been school kids. Uh, I haven't gotten a call from her in, gosh, eight or nine months, that there is still an issue. Chief, have you heard anything?
No, sir, I've talked to her about other stuff, but that hasn't come up when we've talked.
And we've also, there've been some other things that have happened within the sidewalks that, it's my recollection, I don't know if we did something, or perhaps some of the business owners that have made it just more difficult to traverse that area on a skateboard, speed bump types of things, if you will. Uh, so I, I don't know that there's still an issue, but I'll give her a call in the next day or two and see.
Yeah, but that's a little separate issue from the, going to jail.
From this, I thought, yeah, I was wondering if it was my turn.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I, I thought you were still commenting on it.
Well, I'd like to see if there's a consensus here, if they thought it was a good idea to do this. I, I'm one for, if you're going to write something, you mean it, uh, you know, otherwise we look kind of silly, we writing these ordinances here, and they don't make any, you know, there's no, that don't make any sense, essentially.
Is there a time that we do any kind of a, is there a review of ordinances, or anything like that, that's-
No, and that was the intent of some of that money, was to, to begin that process, and we've done some, but primarily in the, in the zoning area, we do update the manual for uniform traffic control each year, or every two years, and so we make adjustments there. Uh, and as we find code, we bring them to you, if there are things that seem to be antiquated or don't make sense, but they're on a catch-as-catch-can basis, uh, so I, I'd still await your guidance, but we-
Well, could we do that on a case-by-case basis?
Absolutely.
Instead of doing, like, I mentioned two, the snow and the dogs, I mean, probably more, but, you know, if we, if we can start somewhere and get something going, we did it for traffic, so we can do it for that, we can do it for a couple of them, and eventually we'll probably get there.
I'll await council's guidance.
We could have an ordinance of a week. So what does council think, so what does the rest of council think?
Well, I, I agree, I don't want to spend a lot of money on it, and I'm willing to do a word search for you, Gary, if you would like, and we will find other ordinance per week.
Do I see a nodding of heads, yes, we should proceed or not, or?
I'd rather see staff spend their time and efforts on more significant things for the city. Do you mind?
And, you know, and, you know, and one suggestion might be, I'm trying to put work on more for us volunteers, but, you know, if you could go through and maybe take a look at some that you think are egregious, then, and, you know, we might want, we might want to do that.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, is a private effort, not to get the city involved. And I want to talk to our, the city attorney as well, there's, in, in many cases, there's the reason that there's the jail term, there, there's a house up the street from me that runs a dog kennel, that dog got out and bit a child, we're dealing with that. If that dog got out and bit a child again, is jail time a reasonable punishment? If those people are being irresponsible? I don't know, but if we take it away, you've taken away that flexibility for a judge to perhaps provide the sufficient and appropriate punishment, maybe dog bites is a bad example. Snow plowing, if we, I periodically come across piles of snow in the road that could be a hazard to another driver, and if people choose not to follow a law, because there's not a, a stiff punishment that is potential, they may just say, to heck with that, I'll keep paying the fines, because it's a lot cheaper than having my snow plow operator move the snow someplace else. If you take it away, you've ta, you've done that, you've taken it away, and it's not there. There may be some that are just absolutely silly, and when those come up, we would be happy to address them.
So what I was seeing from the heads was not to direct staff to, to take this on as a, as a, a task at this time.
For those two particular instances, uh, for exactly the reason that city managers pointed out, you have to have that stick as the most extreme punishments for something that does seem rather trivial at first, but if you have the example of, um, I guess it was in Colorado Springs today, a child was attacked by a dog, now whether that was a repeat offender, I don't know, if it were a repeat offender, I would certainly want jail time as a potential.
Then who's going to take care of that person's family, and, you know, when they lose the income for the family and everything? I think you have to look at the longer aspect of what, what the consequences of that action is, once again, impact on people.
Well, but I don't know if that's for us to decide, I mean, to me, we have ordinances, and there's a judicial process that it goes through, and, you know, that's what those folks deal with, they're, they're the ones that make those determinations, not us. And I think that, yeah, I agree, some of it's very extreme, you think your dog runs away and you're going to go to prison, that's not going to happen, it's just not going to happen. But the, it's there, as Carol said, for extreme cases, so sometimes, you know, when you have extreme things that go on, you have to have extreme punishments.
And I think what we've done, and councils have done and passed in the legislative side, is try to provide the, the tools that the judicial side, the court, the municipal court, they can use. Um, and so I would, I would suggest if there's some that, that, you know, you look at and, you know, and doing a word search or whatever, that you really think need to be changed, then that would be something that we could take a number of them, we could have a workshop on it, um, we could get staff to look at it, but, uh, what I'm seeing now is not to direct staff to go at this time.
Correct.
Okay. Bob, anything else?
No.
Carol?
Nothing.
Ken?
No.
John?
No.
David?
We have a couple of reports this evening, beginning with Brian Clear, his, uh, monthly update on economic downtown development.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to report, if you haven't, uh, been over to Woodland Hardware in the past week, they are open for business. I believe that was on the twenty-sixth, they called it a soft opening, and if you get a chance, go over there, um, they're excited about their, their new, uh, location, and they'll be going through some, some, uh, growth and pains as they get set up over there, but it's, again, very exciting. Also, the city has officially accepted the streets and the infrastructure as it relates to the improvements that were done there, so, um, when you're driving on Center and Saddle Club, you're on a city street now, and so we're excited about that, and as a result of that, um, we are looking at the further development of Woodland Station, including working with the Lot Two, if you recall, uh, and the Amerigas developers, uh, I've spoken of Kip Unruh, Arden Weatherford, and Steve Randolph, who are part of the development team, and we're exploring some, uh, development marketing initiatives to do jointly with them, because we think they have their boots on the ground with some of their marketing efforts. Um, they are looking at some, uh, building programs for this year, uh, we're looking at possibly enjoining with them for the remainder of the parcels, Lots Three, Four, and Five, and coming up with a strategy that makes sense for both that development entity and the DDA, and I will tell you, one of the central conversations is paying off the city debt, because that is something that the DDA, uh, quite frankly, would like to take care of sooner than later, so that is part of our discussion as we move forward in, uh, our considerations for the buildout of Woodland Station. So again, we're excited about, uh, those initiatives. Main Street, we talked a little bit about today, tonight already, and I will tell you, we meet weekly in this room, uh, three o'clock on a Tuesday, and we have a very engaged board and committee and volunteers. Um, it's a, it's been very encouraging to see this group in action and their passion and interest in all things Main Street. Uh, you will be receiving some invitations here next week, uh, either as elected officials or appointed officials, or various, uh, members of the community. Uh, we have a, again, a community assessment coming up March thirty-first through April first. Uh, Downtown Colorado Inc. will be in our community, and we'll, uh, have an aggressive campaign and program, uh, to do an assessment, it'll be, all the sessions will be held at the Cultural Center, and again, you'll be receiving invitation and updates, and I'll continue to update, there'll be articles and media presence, and, and I'll continue to update council on, on that as we get, as we move to that.
And what's that assessment, again?
It's a community assessment, it's part of the, it's part of the requirement, as you recall, for the Main Street application.
Oh, okay, it's part of that, okay.
Right, remember, um, one part was the resolution, which you've adopted, and now the second part will be the community assessment, and that's part of the budget that we talked about earlier. Um, also, I'm continuing, uh, efforts with Pike's Peak Regional Hospital, uh, as you recall, we had applied for a DOL grant last year, did not receive that, largely because a lot of the flooding issue, those dollars went to the communities that were flooded. We've gone a different track, we're going community, community development block grant through the State Office of Economic Development and International Trade. One of our partners is the Southern Colorado Economic Development District, uh, they'll be helping us with a grant application, something in the magnitude of four hundred thousand to perfect that waterline loop that's required for future development, including expansion at the hospital. One of the initiatives that's on the horizon is the nursing facility, which this particular CWBG grant, uh, we get it as a result of employment, for every job added twenty thousand dollars in grants, so they're projecting somewhere in the magnitude of forty to fifty employees, so we're working through that process. We did something very similar with Sturman back in the day, so there's some track record, uh, with OEIDT on this, and so, uh, will we continue moving forward, and I'll, I'll give the council updates as we move through that. It's about a ninety-day process to go through that.
And Brian, let me ask a question, or to make a comment, and, and that all, in looking at that, um, even though that's outside of the, the city limits, that was all, uh, worked through resolutions that were approved by council, um, back then, uh, when that was all done, and there were, the cost of doing that loop would not be borne by the city?
That's correct. That's correct, and, and again, the city provides water and sewer utilities, uh, both those resolutions, uh, to specific areas with the hospital and the campus as it relates to outside water services, so that's correct. Um, again, I'm very active with the USA Pro Challenge, as well as, uh, most of the department heads in the city, and again, that's, it's, it's every other week, sometimes every work endeavor, again, held in this room. Uh, we have a, a very active contingent of the community involved, again, a very exciting program that continues to get momentum, it's very encouraging to work with this group, uh, under the leadership of Mike Perrine, uh, as the head consultant with this, and it, it just shows me how much passion there is in the community, given this very special event, albeit, but all the, all the major players in this community are involved, and it's very encouraging to see that, and we look forward to, to continuing that process as we head to, towards August twenty-second for Stage Five. Um, I get a number of calls, uh, it's almost weekly, uh, on vacant storefronts, uh, in the downtown and, uh, Gold Hill, and of course, we have a lot of dialogue with Bill Page on Gold Hill North or South, but I, I want to assure the community and the council that we are in constant communication with not only the property owners of those buildings, but the businesses. Businesses do come and go, there are business models that are, uh, very successful, we know them in our community, those are those that just don't make it, but we make a constant effort to try to fit the right appropriate business with the right location, and, uh, we have an inventory within our office, we speak with a lot of the realtors, the business owners, um, and the property owners, and I will say, there's a lot of dialogue. Case in point, uh, the Flutterby's, uh, is one that we worked on for quite a while, now there's activity, it's, uh, many of you might know that it's going to be a yogurt shop, um, but that's one example down, down the street, that we'll see, there are others, kind, we're having conversations with Park State about bucks, et cetera, there's always dialogue. Um, property is considered valuable within Woodland Park, and there's a lot of discussion when a, a business flips about who may go in there next, so I just want to assure council that we're always having those discussions. Finally, um, I'm excited to announce that we are going to look at a special event within Woodland Station that focuses on OHV and ATV, we're calling it an expo, we're calling it a big, big tent expo. Um, we have four vendors in our community, uh, Big D, Polaris, Catamount, uh, which has just opened recently, the old Sunix, and then Rockhound, and down in Bust, uh, Colorado in the pass, and really, we're focusing on that connection with Trail, Forest Service Trail, seven seventeen, it's a multimillion dollar industry, and we want to get exposure, um, uh, I know Bill's been involved with a lot of it, we're going to have vendors, uh, from Colorado Springs that would be appropriate. All right, our primary objective is to show the community what the ATV, OHV community really, uh, really means in terms of, uh, the overall economic climate, and we're excited about, we're hoping that it'll probably be a June event, Woodland Station, again, I'll continue to report as we move through that. Is there anything else I can address with council, or any questions I can answer this time?
I appreciate you coming and doing the updates.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Brian. Kip?
Have a quick, uh, water rate update for you, um, effective April first, uh, the annual, um, adjustment of water rates goes into effect, that adjustment's based on seventy-five percent of the Consumers Price, Price Index, and it's approximately two point zero seven eight percent of an increase. That's it.
Questions on that? That's an automatic annual adjustment. Uh, we're soon going to enter into the fire season, and, uh, the chief and our emergency manager and I participated, uh, in an event today that I'd like the chief to describe very quickly.
The, uh, South Central Homeland Security Region, which is, uh, El Paso, Teller Park, Chaffey, and White Counties conducted a tabletop exercise at the Woodland Park, uh, Community Church today, um, it dealt with evacuations during the wildfire. It was a mixture of volunteers and professionals, and the way the, uh, event was structured, as you, uh, broke out into small groups to work on it, you had a small number of professionals and a large number of volunteers, uh, it allowed you to see who these volunteer organizations are, because there's quite a few of them that we don't work with on a regular basis by meeting people in this thing, to see what they do, and allow them to see what you do during these things, because in many cases, people have a general knowledge but no real specific, so conducting this exercise together allowed it to work very well that way. Uh, the exercise was largely developed and, uh, was hosted and, uh, operated by our County Emergency Manager, Steve Steed, um, the only law enforcement that was involved was the Woodland Park Police Department, the Teller County Sheriff's Department, and they were well represented, and several other county representatives were there, too. Most of the other people that were volunteers or emergency managers. It lasted till about three o'clock in the afternoon. I thought it was very useful.
The region that this covered, uh, was Chaffey County, Lake, Park, Teller, and El Paso, so it was quite a large region, and there was representation from all those counties, and as the chief mentioned, many, many different volunteer organizations. So the, the community, that emergency preparedness community is getting ready, and so I think that should give our citizens some comfort.
I have a question, chief, um, this was primarily focused on evacuation?
It was.
Um, I know, following Waldo Canyon, we had a great after-action report from David, um, but I, I asked the question at that time, do we have established evacuation zones and routes and procedures, um, having reviewed our emergency, uh, response plan? Um, I'm not sure we have up-to-date maps that could be posted on our-
I'm not sure we have up-to-date maps that could be posted on our portal, is that something that we can look at this year?
Very easily.
And I know there was some, some discrepancy in terminology for evacuation, was that something that got discussed today?
There wasn't really any discussion of terminology.
What does it mean when it's mandatory versus, you know?
That wasn't part of it at all, but all evacuations in Colorado, unless your locality has specific ordinance, regardless of what you call them, are voluntary.
Thanks, Carol, for that reminder, 'cause sometimes the notices go out, anything east of mountains, such and such, and I don't know the names of all the mountains around here, or all the creeks or anything like that, so maybe a map, you know, would be better to have.
Well, what we did during Waldo Canyon was we, we used, I don't recall using any geographical references, it was always roadways, it was east of US Highway twenty-four to McDonald's, then east of Baldwin, then east of Rampart Range, and then it was, so on, in the national folks, the US Forest Service absolutely used references to Sand Creek, Wellington Gulch, Sand Gulch.
I might have seen that from the county or...
Yeah, from our perspective, we absolutely used street highway names.
But, and I think, going back to Carol's point, maps, there were some issues...
Yes, there were.
And, you know, and the quality of the maps, and kinda knowing, when you get into complicated things, I think down around Aspen Garden Way, and some things like that, if I remember correctly, and so having those ready to go on a, you know, a website so you can, so it could be very clear to people, you know, whether it's Zone Two, Zone Three, whatever it would be, this is the area that's gonna be evacuated.
And I know, I realize sometimes that's, that's not gonna be possible, possible for every event, every situation. I'm, I'm thinking more generically, but I know we don't have anything on our website right now.
I think the, I think the mayor's right, and you as well, on that each incident is very unique, the Hayman Fire was completely different than the Waldo Canyon, different directions, and so to establish zones ahead of time may actually cause more confusion than it's, than it's worth, we have some very well-defined street networks within, within the city, and if we have good and accurate mapping, we can communicate that very clearly without adjusting from something, and I, I, I think that's our charge, is to work with the county to make sure that we have an integrated GIS system for road networks, 'cause there was some confusion exactly in the area, because there was no road that went across an area that we needed to have a line, and so we were saying, imagine a line going from this road to this road, so your points well taken, that the mapping needs to be better.
Could I go back to Councilman Harris's question about mandatory evacuation? When we make that statement, what I mean is we don't go to people's houses, and if they won't let us in, kick the door and drag them out, like some of the stuff you saw in Katrina, places like that, what we do is control the roadway, we encourage people to leave, we ask them to go, we try to convince them it's to their own benefit to go, and then we begin to close roads, and we have complete authority to block roads, to close roads completely, to limit access and so forth, so if the person stays, they're staying, unless they wanna leave, and they won't be going back.
And, and I think that that information be, should be posted on our website, something very simple to understand that this is what it means when we say, get the heck out of Dodge.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yes.
I'm just gonna say, and maybe Debbie would wanna say something about this, that event Saturday morning at the Cultural Center was just fabulous, the presenter, all, all the information, much like what we're talking about here, was really, really good, and it'd be worth having that again, I think, it was really well done.
And that might be something to consider, I mean, I know, I, you know, I couldn't be there, and I know some other people that, that couldn't be there, it might be worth, you know, having another event, you know, that repeated, you know, for other folks as we get closer to the, you know, fire season and things, it just might be something to consider, 'cause I know quite a few folks that weren't able to attend.
It was really, really good.
And, and up here, seems like almost everybody's interested, I mean, we have a vested interest. And I'll just add one, one thing on, you know, even though the maps weren't always clear and everybody didn't, the, when we did that evacuation, if you go back and look at it, that went really well, I mean, in, what, David, two and a half hours, the area that was being evacuated at all, been gone through, and the streets were controlled, and, you know, it really, you know, just to put it in perspective, the people doing between the city and the sheriff's department, that, 'cause of city and, and, and county areas, really did a, an outstanding job, and I think that's, you know, really comes a lot because of the planning that had been done, laid out in advance, and it's really good to hear from, you know, it's good for all of us to hear from, you know, I didn't, you know, that's just great to hear that was going on today.
And we were in that environment in that day, we did this, it was a daylight evacuation, it was, the fire was not cresting a hill, we weren't under tremendous pressure, we had time to prepare, and the execution did go very, very well, and it's, it's this other, these other steps that will allow us to be as effective if the pressure is higher, and that's what we want to aspire to, is to be as efficient as we were when things might even be worse.
So we, we might ask the question, you know, we did the after-action review, should we, you know, before the fire season hits, kinda get an update for the community on, you know, what's, what's, what's happened out of that, you know, how, you know, what actions we have taken to, to make things better, I mean, it might be a, something for a council meeting to get an update on some of that.
And in that regard, I know the Forest Service has been clearing out forests and stuff like that, maybe we could see what their plan is for this year, this summer, you know, what areas they're gonna be, you know, clearing out to, to reduce the perimeter, the danger in the perimeter, a important part.
Is an update to that something council would wanna see, or, David, is it something to be, you know, easy to do, or?
I defer to council, sure, we could provide an update to those things that we've done, mistaken of the timing for it, but if the council likes, we can certainly do that.
I, I, I think it would be prudent to do it before the fire season really gets into it.
Couldn't we get the Forest Service to make a presentation about that?
We'll see, if not, if we can't do that, they've got very limited resources, but perhaps they could provide us something that we can provide to the community, not, not them coming to a presentation, but let us see what we can work out with that. I actually saw some, the, there was a chamber luncheon learned today with Coalition from the Upper South Platte, so I left one thing to go to, to that, and Jonathan Bruno from CUSP had some maps of some activities that were going on for current projects that were from the wildfire mitigation plan, I'll see if we can get those to share. Okay? Lastly, council, by charter, the staff has the responsibility to present to you and to the community, the annual report to the community, that's on your tabletops, it has been posted on the website, it's the 2013 report, it's similar in format to what you've seen in the past, you'll recall that we added a year or two ago to the general fund documentation stats as it relates to the 410 or Street Capital Improvement Fund, this year, the only new category is from the builded generation, it's been re-energized, we've got lots of good activity going on, and we felt it was worthy to dedicate a full page to some of those activities, so that's, that's a new component this year. We are certainly prepared to attempt to answer your question, should you have some this evening, and the department heads are standing by to receive your emails or phone calls from you or the community, should you have questions as you have an opportunity to review this. As I tell many people, this, this town's in great shape, you know, financially, we're in good shape, we have a good police force, we have good streets, we have good water, we have good wastewater, we have great planning, we have good park and rec programs, we have active economic development, and it's, it's just a, it's, it's a good group of people that serve this community, and I think this report is a good reflection of that. What questions can I answer for you about the report?
I would just make a comment that I agree with all of that, and I think one of the things that's key and allows us to be there is, is the planning that goes on for the future, whether it's looking at what needs to be done at the wastewater treatment plant, or what needs to be done at, at the water treatment and water storage and, and things like that, or, or whether it's working on, you know, master plans for stormwater, it's, it's the planning for the future that allows us to get there, and, and, you know, that's stuff that's not always exciting for a lot of people, but it's, it's critical.
And if I didn't have planning in my list of things, planning does a great job of keeping us out of trouble with zoning, so.
Thanks, David.
Anything else from council?
Yes.
Question for the chief, what's the size of your police department now?
It's twenty right now, we have one vacancy, as far as sworn officers.
And these are all full-time?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second school resource officer in place?
One's been hired, appointed, and he's beginning his training, but he's not actually working as a school resource officer until he's properly trained, and we have to replace his position on patrol.
Okay.
That's why there's one vacancy.
When is that likely to happen?
It depends on the quality of our applicants, we've been interviewing for several months.
Now, you, you had the, you appropriated the funding, you allowed the funding.
Yep.
We had a couple of applicants, one took another job someplace else, and in that period, we've had three, two or three of our officers that have sustained injuries or physical conditions that have caused him to go on light duty, and so we just don't feel that it's the right thing to do to pull from the patrol where this new SRO is coming from, and he's currently going through that training, and we still need him on patrol, so as soon as we can back him on patrol, then he'll scoot over to be the, the second SRO.
Hearing nothing else? Meaning adjourned.